So we will escape without needing tires for that because those tires are really expensive because of the weight on the front end of that. If you flip the page, you'll look at some additional things that will be needed done in 18 and we're looking at, you know, the three to six month mark with these. This is more of a heads up for planning purposes, but the 90, which we've talked about needing a replacement for that, the 2000 really is two years past service life and should be rolled back and the 90 should be retired. But being that it hasn't been retired and it's still utilized and utilized on a fairly regular basis because our fleet ages and things go out of service more frequently, that's rolled up on the frontline status a lot more. That needs a complete suspension overhaul. That's front and rear and ballparking that is around 10,000. So the suggestion was made to budget 12.5 for it just in case. Because when you start looking at the kingpins that connect the suspension to the frame, there's a number of things that we won't know until they get it apart. Also because these fire trucks, they're old and the airlines for the braking systems are becoming an issue. We have a number of times where we're waiting for the trucks to fill up with air. We're utilizing a jockey pump in the firehouse Florida to get the air brake systems up and running because we don't have the money to fix them and they need to be gone through. We had our vendor in-house today to kind of look at everything. I was trying to give you guys a ballpark and he was really reluctant because he said, you know, the 09 was newer and said it could just be a fitting. He said, but you get into the ladder truck, which is 21 years old and you may be replacing all the plumbing for the airline system just to find out where the leaks are coming. These leaks are substantial. We can't take a truck to a public gathering, turn it off, walk away from it without coming back and having the tanks empty. So it's a response delay issue that we are concerned about, but also keep in mind it's a safety issue. When you're, when they're, the braking system, these apparatus, and you're talking to ladder truck is 46,000 pounds. And you need to make sure those brakes work and stop that vehicle. And so the other issue we have coming to that is preventative maintenance because our garage is understaffed, I guess would be the best way to put it. When Randy Wheatloff passed away and we were especially, I'm sure the police didn't say anything, we were especially affected by that. He was an amazing person and he single-handedly saved this city in a measurable amount of money. The amount of repairs he was able to perform on our vehicles. We're hurting without him, I can tell you that, you know, especially as our fleet ages. But we were able to get him to Seagrave and get specialized training and stuff and Kevin's great, but he's, he's not equipped for this kind of repairs. And the other mechanic really has not, no interest in working on fire trucks. So what we need, we need those things to be DOT inspected and have a preventative maintenance schedule. So we're working on that to provide you guys with a solid number because this is something that has to happen. This is more of a, hey, this is coming down the line. We don't know what the costs are going to be. You know, for our ambulances and our staff cars, that kind of maintenance is well handled by the city garage. Kevin traditionally takes care of most of our equipment and that stuff. But when you're talking about DOT checks of the braking systems and not only that, the documentation that goes along with that, it's from a liability standpoint especially, that's, it'll be much better for, for the city. We just don't have a number on that. And so keep in mind, we have an aging fleet and I know you guys are working your buns off trying to get through this fiscal emergency. And I think we can help in regards to giving you guys some, some planning over the course of the next few years. Obviously, I know the commission's working on a capital improvements plan that we would certainly be more than happy to assist them with on our end and the things that, you know, the definitive needs, certainly there's wants that we want to see as well, but right now specifically, these are needs. The other document you have in front of you is just a heads up on turnout gear. Turnout gear is an issue that I know I spoke with the finance committee in 2008, 2007, 2008 regarding our personal protective gear. Those things have life expectancy and it's not a, not a if, it's a when, it's a 10-year thing. We had made a kind of a plan that we were going to make it a line on a budget item that so many sets get replaced every year. You know, and fortunately for us, we were very successful getting grants and replaced a number of sets. And so that, that item kind of fell off the table. We didn't need it because we just received a huge number. But the past three annual reports that I submit that were given to all of you, if you, they're attached, I asked for 10 sets in 14, 15 sets in 15 additional sets last year. We're at a dire straits here for next year. Next year, we've got to replace 20 sets minimum. Unfortunately, we'll probably retire additional sets this year when inspections are done. I've provided kind of what we use for our cost breakdown, stuff over the grand life expectancy of these, you're looking at $250 per year for your turnout gear. There's $2,500 for a set approximately. That's for your coat and your pants. And we had kind of come up with a plan that we were going to buy 10 sets every year and kind of rotate that through. There's a number of reasons for that, but it's something we really need to look at putting as a line on them annually because those are items that are, they're consumables essentially. You look at it from a budgetary standpoint, they come in, they go out, if they get used, they get damaged, we can repair them. We do a lot of stuff on our own to, to help alleviate some of the costs that we just started a new repair area at the firehouse and we can actually do some minor repairs that's allowed by NFPA. We can do that in-house. We've got a couple of guys that are, have gone to sewing school and that, that's going to alleviate a lot. Our problem comes in when the interior lining, which is a moisture barrier, it's a thermal barrier, when those have issues, we can't touch those. So those get sent out and you get a high cost. The average repair for a piece of gear that I have, it's over five years old, is typically in the neighborhood of $350 per piece. And so you start looking at that calculator and go, okay, I'm comfortable spending that kind of money on a piece of equipment that's five, or a piece of gear that's five, six years old. But as we get to years seven, eight, and nine, it's almost not worthwhile. Now, we'll have a better understanding of how much those repairs are going to cost us because we will strictly be sending out just those interior linings. And those are typically the most expensive repairs, but we'll be able to recoup some of those repair costs by doing the shells ourselves. But it's, it's more of a, hey, heads up, we know the appropriations are going to go forward next year and that in, in regards to the fiscal plan that you guys are going to set forth something that's going to be within the plan and then make adjustments accordingly, probably before March when they do the final acceptance. But there are some deficits that, you know, finance needs to be made aware of. Is there any questions I can answer regarding any of this stuff?
We cut a lot of frills too.
Yeah.
I mean, we have, you know, like we have put in for different classes that we were able to get the POs to treat for them that I sent back, you know, simply because it was a one, not necessarily a need. Unfortunately, I did find out that like some of the things were in a 7200 key versus a 73 and you couldn't transfer it over. But still, you know, we, we freed up the money by not, by not having the class. One of them was an active shooter class for our, for our paramedics to be able to respond to those kind of situations. I mean, knowledge will allow to respond to it and unfortunately, we, you know, it, it just cost too much money for, you know, we, we did get a PO for it, but we send it back. You know, so that, we do have three guys that were assigned to squad who are paramedics. We get a lot, a lot of good training, but you know, really it'd be nice to have every one of the medics trained at that level so that if it does or happen that, you know, we'll, we'll respond and do something. You know, so like I said, something I went down through with things and said, that's a need, that's a want, that's a need, that's a want, and eliminated a lot of the wants. I mean, I didn't even join the Ohio Fire Chiefs Association this year just because it's a, it's a, it's a want, not necessarily a need. It just pays, but still it all helps out in the end.
All right. Lead time on turnout gear or whatever, I mean, as far as if.
Sure. So turnout.
Get to a point where say, hey, this is, I mean, is it somewhere if you went to, I don't even know where you get that, but if.
We have a number of vendors we can, we can utilize. Typically, the manufacturers lead time when orders placed is somewhere between 45 and 70 days delivery from order. And typically, we can have order done within usually three days because of the shift rotation at the firehouse. We have to bring the guys in, have them measured on duty. These are not a deal. That's, that's been my responsibility over the last 10 years and we've got it down to a system. So it's, it's definitely, the, the other issue too with that is we're so far behind that it's kind of messed up our rotation. So we're looking at, you know, potentially maybe half up front and then down the line to, to start staggering these purchases out, this one big purchase so that in 19, we can get on plan with a, a normal rotation.
So you could do 10 in the first six months, 10 in the second six months, and then 10 for all of 19, 10 for all of 20?
Probably. I'd have to, we're, we're 25 sets behind.
Okay.
However, we have had some retirements, so it's affected the, the initial, but we also retired some gear that we weren't anticipating retiring.
Yeah.
We've also added some new gear into the rotation with some new hires, the two, you know, year and a half ago, we hired the five, so that's, that's helped. We also made an emergency spare purchase last year from, we had to, we had no backup gear.
So you guys, when you hire people, they tend to stay. You don't get a lot of people that hire and one or two years quit and go somewhere else, right?
And the, and so in my timeframe with the fire department, which is going on 19 years, we've had, we've had four employees leave for gainful employment in another, another location. And that's probably out of a hiring pool of 36.
Yeah.
At least.
And one of them was a relocation too because his wife got.
Yeah, relocated out of state. Traditionally, yes, we, we have a higher.
Retention.
Retention percentage. Also, while this stuff is custom measured and made for people, we keep a flow chart of those measurements and we do have similar body types. We're able to reutilize that if needed. I just took a retiree's gear, just took his nameplate off the back and had to reissue it because we, it was, we have to have it in service. You know, so we, and we start inspecting and this gear gets inspected every year and that's what we make our determinations of what needs to be repaired and what's going to get taken out of service permanently because it's not cost-effective and probably not a wise use of taxpayer dollars to repair something that's going to effectively be disposed of in a year anyways. So.
All right, well, two things. One, I guess we can chat with Anna Mary tomorrow to see about if we can initiate the, at least some of the repairs on the, the units to get started on that.
I would show a total there of adding $29,581.11, which would cover the existing things, but do the rebuild on the engine.
And the 01 that's running frontline at the present time, that is due to be traded in when the new ambulance is delivered.
All right.
And we're looking at, I think they're talking, you know, mid to late January. So let's hope that nothing happens to that between now and then.
Yeah.
Because that's our reserve unit.
Still running, hold on. It's frontline, 16-year-old ambulance frontline.
How much of a credit are we getting?
$12,000.
That's pretty good.
For a 2001.
Yeah.
And it's been through the mill. It's been through the mill. It, it allowed us to, to stay within the confines of the plan and what they, what they gave us to, you know, to purchase the medic unit with. Actually, I think we came in just a little bit under, but so really can't argue that point with them, but just hope that nothing happens between now and then to it. Like I said, it's usually a backup reserve unit that's only used when something's going out of service to get an oil change or something like that.
I'm sorry if you said.
I'm sorry, please.
No, I'm sorry if you said this already. The 25 sets of gear, what is like one set of gear approximately cost?
So we're talking, if you talk about firemen, outfitting of firemen, it's gloves, helmet, hoods, coat, pant, boots. Now typically, when we're talking about gear, for the most part, we're talking about just the coat and the pant. Typically, that price has been around $2,500 per set. So you see, we, we asked for 20 sets, I believe, and we did a requisition.
Put a record for.
$50,000. So I, I believe we, you know, this is all bought off state term pricing, so we don't need to go out for competitive bidding, don't have to do any of that stuff. We buy it straight off of the state term and actually the vendor we utilize, we get it under state term for what we buy. So we get some savings there. So 2,500 is a good round number for you to utilize. We will have a number of helmets that need to be replaced in two years. So as we come, we get this total replacement plan, if we, if we can do it to 10, you know, 10 sets, if we can get the gear now, we're fine. But then we'll need to roll in 10 complete sets and so we're going to replace 10 boots, 10 helmets, 10 sets of turnout gear every year forward, then we're fine. You know, consumables like hoods and gloves, we just, we eat that from our, our either repair budget and it's usually not, not a huge deal. Helmets is like a, it's, you get to use a helmet for 10 years and then it's gone.
Does a helmet run?
Um, yeah, about 300 bucks. So the, the, the big ticket items are your, are your coat and pant.
Yeah.
Boots typically $175.
Want to run through what I got?
Yeah.
We'll check with her tomorrow and see about.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Mr. Smith, you should, did you get those emails? I think I copied you on all those emails.
To, to them, yeah. I just didn't know if she had this particular page.
We will send that.
Yeah, send that because that's what I'll talk to her.
You did, you see then, the ones I sent to her, I copied.
Yeah, those to Joe Gears, Anna Mary Thomas, and then I was copied on it, yeah.
I'd always make those.
You too.
Thank you.
All right. So my stack of documents that, that you're going to look through, first, we have two different exhibit As. One for permanent appropriations for 2018 and one for final changes to permanent appropriations for 2017. They look like this. I've got a, some general information. We have the statement of cash position report, which is given every month or every time we meet, showing what each fund's cash is. There is a purchase order request form here, which are purchase orders, request return with insufficient appropriations, which we'll go through. There's the City of Norwood cash flow, which shows all the major expenditures for the year. Couple of things at the end of the year that are going to come up on that I'd like to talk about. And then we've got the other page or two pages that are here are the general fund monthly revenue, which shows each key or major key groups' revenue based on projected, whether it's up or down, and what the total amount is that we are up now from projected, which is on the bottom right-hand corner. There's, that is also represented in two different forms with, of graphs, which one is earnings tax, actual versus predicted month to month, and the other one is total general fund revenue, actual versus predicted. So those are for your information. As we sit right now, we are going to be, we are currently $378,461.19 over the projected revenue that we had at the beginning of the year. It's almost $380,000. People will talk about how earnings tax is up. It is up, but there's other areas that are significantly down. And also the way it's being reported, remember, we go off of projected, not off of what, how high we are from the previous year. So when you get that earnings tax report from the treasurer and it goes, we are up 15% from this point last year.
That would be correct.
That would be correct, but it's apples and oranges because we knew we were going to be up. So the real question is how much are we up over what we thought we would be getting, which is what's shown here? And when we take that amount and subtract off all the areas that are down, that's where we're left with $378,000, which is good. You know, that, that's a good amount, but it, it's not like we have an extra one and a half million dollars sitting around, which is sort of the chatter that I hear.
Well, I think the general fund, at least in the plan, I think we were, was.
There was a significant increase.
Yeah. And I mean, if we were at 17 something, something that we projected.
Right.
And I mean, right now, we're at, you know, 17043. So that, that's under what we projected for 12 months. So I mean, that's, you know.
There'll be, there'll be some.
But that doesn't include December.
Correct.
Yeah.
When we look at the City of Norwood cash flow analysis page, there's a couple of things that changed at the end of the year, which will essentially lower what our projected negative amount is at the end of the year. The, the greatest thing we have here is the Humana Medical Insurance. We do not make a payment in December. We always make the payment, it's due the first of every month. We typically pay it by the 25th of every month so that they actually get it. But since we would be paying January's payment, we are not going to pay it until January of next year. So when you look at how we've paid, there's essentially 12 payments that are on there now because you'll see a double payment in March. And that was catch-up because we were always paying a little late. We were always paying in the first week of the month and we got caught up there. Well, now this represents 12 payments, but when we had that December payment in there, it would essentially be 13 payments and the states had pushed that off to January so you get 12 each year. So that, that's nice. That gave us, you know, extra $170,000 or so that we're not paying. Also, the amount of the health insurance has gone down, as has the payroll because we've lost some people. We've had people leave employment of the city. We just in this past month had three more go. So we are seeing a decrease in payroll. Now, while we will see some overtime go up in some areas to make up for that, we're not paying insurance to those people. So those things help out. We also pushed off, we had police, one of the police buybacks, we had that in there for December. It's really not due till January, so we pushed that to January. We'll meet that under the contractual obligation, but we're not going to pay it early.
That's the 81,000?
No, it's not on here. These are, this is exactly what I, this is actually what I think we are going to be paying. So this is where we are now, which really puts us about, if our revenue next month or for December, when I say next month, when we calculate and close it out, if our revenue is what I expected and our expenses are what I expected, we're going to look at about $1.4 million negative, which going back a few months ago, it was looking like it was 1.9 million. So there are some of those big swings with payroll and with health insurance and some of the other payments, plus the increase in the revenue has really helped us out, I think, and gotten that number down, which is a good thing.
Just in that same conversation right there. So can you let us know, I know that we started the year, you know, not necessarily, when did we make all these extra payments of the state odd areas and improve them so that we can pay?
Those were really, when you look at it, those were made a huge amount in April. If you look at April here, look at that miscellaneous other expenses, 360,109, that was it. You also see the 446,277 for the C9 trust. April was that big month.
Gotcha.
If you look all the way on the bottom left, the carryover remaining, we came into this year with negative $904,470. That's how far we were in the hole. And then each month, the revenue, the, the actual revenue, if it's, if it's shaded in, those were actual expenses, right? The ones that aren't shaded right now are that far right column, which is December, those are just projections. But as this grows over the year, you're shading the columns that are actual expenses. So you can actually see that carryover amount that's on the bottom, that's how negative we are and that should match what's on each month's cash position report.
Okay. And so just to guess the question, the overall question I have about that subject is how well did we do this year when it comes to, like, did we start out, like, if you look at all the expenses that we owed that were encumbered or what have you, that we couldn't pay last year, did we start out at negative 904,000 this year and then we're ending negative 1.4 million?
Correct.
Okay. So we actually, over the year, we had $500,000 in spending that was representing of this year than we had.
However, however, remember, we had the police and fire pension fund payments that we had contracted that we should have paid last year, that we agreed, so those are in here. So when, when you see that negative amount go up, that's a big chunk of that.
Are there other things too? So I guess overall though, let's just say we didn't have any of those catch-up payments. Like if we just had for the entire year, the amount that we owed for that year, did we come out, were we more in the positive this year or more in the negative? If you look at all the income that was attributed to this year and then all the expenses that should have been attributed to.
Oh, we would, we would be positive for the year if we took out all of the bills that we didn't pay from 2016.
Okay.
Yes, we would be. So when you really look at that cash balance of negative 904,470, right, at the beginning of the year, you could easily add over a million dollars that we owed on top of that, some of which were encumbered at the beginning of the year and other parts were agreed to be paid this year, so they were not encumbered.
Right.
But as, you know, you look at the big payments to the C9 trust, the big payments to the police and fire pension, the back pay that we owed for buybacks and for clothing allowance to the police and fire, those are things that we paid this year because we didn't, we couldn't last year.
And we didn't encumber them, so they wouldn't be.
Correct. They weren't all in, some of them were, but not, not all of them were encumbered, yes. And this is a cash balance. This does not include encumbrances.
Sure.
But the other, the other thing too, when you look at the number we started with last year, 904, something short, and we wind up 1. whatever this year, people mention about revenue, you know, being up. Well, the only revenue that people really see that are up, including ourselves for the most part, unless you look into it, are, you know, the earnings tax numbers are, are up some. But on the back of the sheet, when like Jim mentioned, that there's a number of items that are down, but like license and permit, year-to-date, down $202,000. Intergovernmental revenue, we're down $351,000. Fines and forfeitures, we're down $47,000. Then miscellaneous revenue, we're down $161,000. So when you add up all the different revenues that we projected compared to, you know, what we anticipated, we're down to five, almost $600,000 in projected revenue that didn't come through, you know, compared to, you know, previous years.
Building permits were not where they were expected to be. Now, next year, I think they're going to be up. That was a big chunk. That's a big chunk in that 202 that's down. The other one is hotel tax. We really projected that that new hotel would have been open before November. We were, we were initially looking at that being open in June and because they pay quarterly in arrears, we're not going to see, we expected to maybe get two payments out of them and we're not. And so those two areas, those are two big things that were down. The, the spreadsheet that makes all of these charts and this, lists key by key, month by month. If you ever want to look at it and dig in and go, what's down, what's up, month to month and look historically back 10 years at the monthly revenue, I've got it. It's, it's a monster, but it's fun.
We'll definitely be looking more at it. So hotel tax, is that under intergovernmental?
Correct. And it's under intergovernmental because it used to be collected by the county and then sent to us on the county settlement sheet where, and so that's the key we've always had. And then once we created our own hotel tax, we just kept that same key because it's there, even though it may not collapse, you know, if we were to rewrite the system, we wouldn't put it there. But that's under intergovernmental. Intergovernmental is also your property tax, tangible personal property tax, alcohol tax, cigarette tax, local government funds, state subsidy, and hotel tax. local government funds, state subsidy, and hotel tax.
Got you. Does the intergo... Is the earnings tax completely collected by the charge's office? Or do we have... Does some of that come from... Does the state collect some of our earnings taxes?
No. As far as I know, it's all done by us.
Good, good.
I would not want the state to collect it.
I would agree with that, too.
So looking at all of that background data, where I got the numbers... Okay, first of all, probably the easiest thing is to address the 2018 appropriations. Because what this is, is the plan. And so we can't change it now. The idea is, once we close out and have further discussions with the state, we can have the Fiscal Emergency Commission, we can request changes then. But this is the fiscal emergency plan in appropriations form. I sent this to Anna Mary Thomas, who went through it. There was one change from the original spreadsheet, which was Fund 19. She said, under the plan, needs to be $0 appropriations. So I made that change that they recommended, and then they approved that as our appropriations for next year. So it kind of is what it is. We can't change it now, but hopefully in the first quarter, as we move into next year, we will be addressing our requests for changes, dealing with things like the things with the fire department requests, the police department requests, other things we would want to see, and then approach the Fiscal Emergency Commission all at once.
So in looking at what we had or sent, I kind of compared to the plan that we approved and that they approved.
Right.
And that's pretty well, the numbers are exactly the same to get started.
Right.
And then it's up to us to submit any changes in that, from council to the board, or to the state first, and then to the board for any additional, you know, changes or revisions. So that's what that Exhibit A... Pretty much, if you pulled out the fiscal plan for 2018, it pretty well matches verbatim on each item.
Do you guys have any questions on that?
Do we have a forecast for next year based, you know, what are... Where we're going to end up in the year? Is it going to be the same as what's in the fiscal recovery plan right now? Or is there any updated forecasts?
We updated our revenue forecast in September and sent them to the state. It was a little higher than what was in the plan. The real number is going to be by the end of January. Once we close this year out and we create the Certificate of Estimated Resources for each fund, which is due by January 31st, to the county. Usually, once we close out, I put that together by the 20th or so. That'll give us a pretty good idea of what our revenue is going to be projected. And then all of those numbers will go into the big revenue spreadsheet, line by line. And that'll give us a pretty good idea of how much we're going to have. And we can look at that and say, well, where is our revenue going to be? Is it going to be higher and how much higher? Because I think it will be a little higher than what's in the plan. And then that may give us some freedom to pay for things like the PPE, you know.
Thank you.
But that's by January 20th, usually. The other stuff that I have here all goes towards this Exhibit A. You'll notice there's highlighted ones on here, and I did that... I actually put together the spreadsheet that creates all of this Thursday and sent it to Joe. He had some questions. I also went to Anna Mary. And we looked through a lot of things. And so the things that have changed from the first one that I sent you, I highlighted on this. So I think I got them all. Couple of major things. The two other kind of long documents you have here, these are pages on the spreadsheet. This is payroll. It says payroll on the top there. These are payroll projections for the end of the year. So this is basically our expense account, current year only. Line by line, every department, how much payroll has been year-to-date with last Friday's payroll in it. So we went back and took the month-to-date expenses, which is two payrolls, divided it by two, and added that to the end where it says final pay. And those would be our projected costs. And then we look at the year totals and how much they need to change, going up or down. Now, there were some things on here that changed that were different. For example, initially here, I had, you know, if you look at the 2017 council, it says there should be $28,000 or $2,800. Well, you guys only get paid once a month, so I had to go back and correct that. So we changed that. The other one that did that was the O-700 Civil Service Commission. They don't get an extra payment either because they get paid once a month. So we did go through and make those changes to the payroll where applicable. And then that changes, if you look on this other sheet, the long one, this is the expense account current year only for all the departments and keys. And the numbers on this payroll page import to this column. So the one that's actually changed, you'll look, it didn't change to $2,800 for personnel for council. It was fixed. It's $191,24 is what needs to go up. I tried to highlight the ones that changed between the times that I sent it to Joe. Then, so if you look through this, this is how much... If you look in it, the current appropriations are the first column, the year-to-date expenses are the second, the current POs, the encumbrance, are the third column, the balance left over after encumbrance is taken off are the fourth column. So then going through this and making the changes that we have to make to the payroll keys for people either being hired or leaving, or extra buyback money, or people cashing out comp time, or all these other little things that change the way that the payroll comes up, there's things that go up and there's things that go down. Well, all of these changes added up leave us, if you look at the top of that page, with $247,965.13 under the... If we make these changes, that much under what the fiscal emergency plan is. So when you really want to look at a number and say, well, how well did we do this year? That's pretty good. And there's a few reasons for that. You know, we did subtract some things for some bills that we thought were coming and didn't. And it allows us to have that little bit of extra money. Now, in looking at that, the other thing is, we've looked at this purchase order request with insufficient appropriations. Some of these things need to be paid this year. Some of these things are things that we actually have invoices on. So we went through this with Kelly in my office and also with Anna Mary today. And we added in the appropriations for those areas to cover it. Now, there's another one that's on here that we'll talk about, too. But number one, workers' comp needs $2,035. That's in there. That's paying for a renewal for our group program that we belong to. And we pay for that group fee, and we get a huge savings. Insurance, we need to add that insurance to cover the new trucks. Yep, the new truck we bought. The public lands and buildings, we're just bringing that positive because it's that audio/video thing. But these other two things, we're going to just carry through to next year. Mayor's Court, that's the public defenders. I put both of those in there. Recreation, these are old Miami chemical bills for chlorine that was purchased without a purchase order. We're going to pay those off. Building Department, the last thing that was on there, $6,160. That's for their Cajus license.
But they always had that kick in at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, but they've already... They've already got it invoiced, so pay it now while we've got the money, right? Page two, there's nothing on there that we're going to cover that I put into this, right? Page three, under Public Works, there's $849.85, which is Polar and Associates. That's actually... They're going to go to Collections to... For something they did for the Department of Transportation, light replacement. So we would like to put that in there. So those items, I've already put into these appropriations and instructed my staff that if it gets approved, pay them. You know, this gets approved on the 26th, payments go out on the 27th. The rest of these are all requests that we turned back that we don't have invoices on. So we've kind of said at this point, no more POs for this year. And if you don't have a PO, don't buy it. And so I think if we did approve anything... I mean, we're only approving the things people... That we're really committed to pay for this year that we already have invoices on. So I included those.
You don't have an invoice for the Hamilton County for painting the lines?
No.
Yeah, that's fine. I just...
Not that I'm aware of, but that comes out of the street fund anyway. Anything that's negative... And the reason we've got some funds and some keys that are negative, you may have heard the fire chief talk about it. When we made our initial appropriations of the year, based on what I was saying, our expenses would probably be this year, when the state came in and made their fiscal emergency plan, they decreased a number of those keys. In many situations, they decreased them below the actual encumbered purchase orders that were out. And so we're like, well, wait, there's already POs out. So it automatically made those keys negative. And we've gone and tried to get some department heads to close POs, which did help. But now we're able to increase a lot of those keys up to those levels of those purchase orders and cover the encumbered amount. That is not a problem we're going to have next year because we're doing the opposite. We're starting with the plan and building from there, as opposed to starting with what we had and having the plan cut it, which was a problem. One other thing that we did put in here, and I know Joe is familiar with this, Smart Watt. You remember Smart Watt? The people that fixed our lights and said we'd save all this money?
Yep.
Yeah. So we owe them, under the fire key, $8,581.92. And under the public lands and buildings, $7,859.33. So about $16,000. I've talked to Anna Mary about this, and I talked to Joe Gears, and I'm like, let's just get this thing paid now. So I added that in.
Have we done any kind of analysis on the utility bills to see if they act... It actually did save us any money?
No. You're more than welcome to the...
Oh, yeah. I'm not expecting you to do that.
I'll be glad to.
That they would come back and do that to kind of show you, hey, here's what... Here's what we've...
Maybe we should ask them to do that.
Yeah, that might not be a question.
Well, there's going to be bills for it for next year, too. It's not like this pays it off.
We have to pay it either way. Even if it didn't save us a dime, we signed... Well, maybe we wouldn't. But it would be nice to be able to show, have something to show for it.
Let them do the analysis and show...
I think that by making this payment to them, it would put us in better relationship to where they might come do that. But I did add that in because I'm trying to get as much stuff right now off the table that we can. We do have a little bit of leeway on the appropriations to clean up some things. And we are not going to have that, you know... And we have that because we're $350,000 or $380,000 above where we thought we were going to be. So that gives us a little bit of wiggle room within the plan. And so far, Anna Mary has approved the things I'm talking about, which is why I'm hoping she'll approve the $28,000 for the fire stuff because we either do it now or we do it next year. If we can do it now without going to the commission, that's bonus. You know, let's get it done while we can.
So they're okay... So when we have additional, just so I can kind of understand their process and their thinking, when we have additional revenues, like revenue above the fiscal plan level, we can go above the expense level on some of these keys at times?
No, it's the opposite. If you're... If you have some expenses that you were expecting that didn't... Weren't realized, so you can lower the appropriations in that key and move those appropriations to increase another key. So right now, if we look at, here's our expenses, let's lower everything down to what our current expenses and POs are, how much is left? And we say, okay, now we got $300,000 under what they allow. So as long as we can make changes within our budget, as long as we are always under what the fiscal emergency plan has for that fund.
Okay.
Because if we would ever attempt to go over that, that's when we have to submit documentation and go through every step.
And that's not the way that it was explained in the beginning of this.
Right.
It was, if you do any changes... Like, they would say you can move fire, contractual, and materials and supplies, but you can't move from police to fire. Well, now they're saying, yeah, you can do that as long as you're below it. But they're going to be very hesitant. The state's going to be very hesitant to allow us to move stuff like that early in the year because...
You don't know what's going to happen.
Right, but at the end of the year, when we're looking at this and going, you know what? We've got some areas where our expenses were down. So let's decrease those appropriations and move them over here and use those for other things. I still think that we, you know, don't spend $247,000 because ideally, it would be really nice, even with this repairing these fire trucks, to go to the commission and go, we were $220,000 under our plan. That's how well we did and saved money.
We came in under what we anticipated doing by looking at ways to... Everybody did their part to kind of... So for what it's worth.
Does anybody have any questions about what's on this Exhibit A? And again, all of these things came from here. Not all of them equal what's on here. There are things where there's maybe decreases that are rounded off, et cetera. But if you look on this sheet, and you look at that change column, it basically matches everything that's here. The difference is, we've got decreases in the bottom and increases on the top.
One note I had, I don't know if it made sense to you or not, it was highlighted in yellow on my copy on the street.
Yes.
And I didn't... Was that just because?
Usually, like for yours, there was some specific things that we're going to pay for there. As I'm working on these sheets, I'll highlight things in yellow, which mean I need to go back and look at them.
Yeah, I just...
That's pretty much what it is. I highlighted the insurance because I want to make sure that as soon as that goes up...
I did pick up on that one.
We pay that bill. The highlights on the streets was, you know, we're moving money from one to another to cover some... You know, we've got to cover the electric bill, $23,000. We've got to cover contractual. So we had to move some things around a little bit in that fund, which unfortunately, being a fund, we have to stay within its narrow restrictions, so...
When we look at Exhibit A, again, I mean, just with... I'm just going to pick the largest amount that's changing by far. For the fire department, the O-18427100, first key, you know, it being at $412,000, do we know... Did something happen that caused that?
Well, there's several parts of that. So number one was, there's $110,000 in there that when we started the year, we were making the police and fire pension payments out of a separate key. And then after the first month, so we paid $200,000 in January out of that key. Then we got to February, and the state's like, you need to just pay it out of... Even though you owe it in arrears, pay it out of that fund. So when we got to the end of the year, we had that $200,000. We moved $110 to the fire and $90 to the police. So that's part of it. The other part of it is, we had some... There were people who left. If you look at the payroll sheet and you go to the fire page, which is O-10842, separation pay was $186,216.36. Bottom, very bottom figure. See where it says separation? Now, we used to track separation pay in a separate fund and then out of a separate key. And they said, no, you need to put separation pay into each fund. Well, almost $190,000 worth of... Well, $186,000 worth of separation pay, that's a big chunk of that, too. The other thing was, there were some buybacks that had built up over the limit in amounts, but there was not a mechanism mentioned within the contract as to how to manage that. That was probably about $120,000, top of my head, but it's probably about a quarter of what's there. That people had time built up in either police or fire beyond the limit of their time bank, but there was no mechanism within the contract and no policy in the city with what do you do when people are turning in comp time above the limit? And so finally, after working with the mayor, he issued a letter, which is now our policy, which says, nobody goes over that limit. Now, we're still dealing with that in a couple of areas like sick time. But as far as comp time goes, if you turn in... time goes, if you turn in a payroll sheet and you, and you're at your maximum comp time and you say, I want 10 hours of comp time added to it, we just pay you overtime. We don't add it into comp time. So, but we didn't have a policy that said to do that prior to now, but that fixes the situation. But it did add about $100,000 to $120,000 that we had to pay these people out. It's better to pay them out now than when they retire in five years and make more money. So that's part of it. We still, along those same lines, have an issue with some department's sick time because we don't know, it doesn't say in the contract how to manage this, and I've spoken to the people that are negotiating the contracts for police and fire, how to handle this. Because if it says you can only have so many hours of sick time, let's say you can have 800 hours of sick time and it cuts off, that's not the real number, but we're going to use that. And then you generate more sick time because your contract says you get so many hours every pay period or for every hour you work. What happens to that extra time? Well, in talking to a lot of people, they say, they just don't get it. They're maxed out. They don't get it, it goes away. But you talk to the unions, that's a whole other subject. It's ours, we earned it. Should they be being paid it out the way you do the comp time? And if you pay it out, do you pay it out at the full amount or do you pay it out at the two-thirds? So these are things that need to be cleared up in the contract because we have been putting more sick time than what's allowed or vacation time or holiday time. Those are easier because you could say, once a year you look at it or once a month you look at it and if you're over your holiday pay, then we just pay it out. But, sick time's funny. So, these are issues that we're addressing and, you know, we, we fixed some of it this year, but it did mean there was a little money paid out. The, you'll notice the C-9 trust amount appropriated goes down. That's because we did not get in, we, we don't have invoices for them. I just got another invoice, I think, for $14,000 that we're going to be paying out this week, but I don't see any more invoices coming in this year. We will be getting a big invoice first quarter of next year that they say catches us up, but we'll see.
With that $14,000 invoice, who submits a PO for that?
Comes from the Safety Service Director. The, the bill essentially comes to their office and then they write the PO request and send it down to us and we process it. It has to go back up to them to sign the processed order, then it comes back down to us and the next time we do a check run, we do it. So there can be, depending on, you know, people, but let's say on a normal process, from the time that invoice comes in to it actually gets paid, might be a week or two. If people are on vacation, et cetera, then, you know, that happens because we don't have a huge, huge staff up there. But, that's the process that happens for paying those. As, the same process happens, we get an invoice, the invoice that comes to us is just a letter from renovation. It says, you owe us this much for Millennium Plan, where retirees' healthcare, and this much for C-9 trust. And then we write two POs for that, or they write two POs and it goes through the PO process and then it goes. The $309,000 we're taking off, I left $50,000 in there just in case another bill comes in. We just got $14,000, so that'll come out of that 50. We can't use this money for next year. When that invoice comes in next year, it comes out of next year's appropriations and that's built in to next year's money, so.
Yeah, because in C-9 trusts in our 2018, there's more funds appropriated there.
Right.
But, like you're saying, if we don't have invoices to pay it, we have to zero that out.
It doesn't do any good to keep it there and we can use it for other things, so. There's no fund, there's no collection of money, there's not even a separate fund for tracking it. It all is a key in the general fund now.
But, if you get questioned that, why is that at zero? Well, we have to have that at zero if we have, because... At the end of the year, we can't pay anything more out of that because we have no more invoices except for what comes in right now.
Yeah, for the next week or two.
But then next year, it all starts all over again and so on 2111 line item there, there's, you know, it's, there's stuff appropriated there for next year, so it starts all over.
Yeah, I forget how much is in the plan for that. Yeah, there's $500,000 for next year, right? With retirees' healthcare misspelled, that's actually out of the system that way.
So anyhow, it's not in case it would be questioned, it's still there, it's just to zero out this year, you have to balance, so. All right. Um, I guess the only other thing that, is that all you had? I mean, as far as what, I mean, that's what I kind of wanted to go through, however, we can't really write a report because you and I are going to be doing it too here.
Yeah.
But at least, we can submit this if we think, yeah, this looks, we have a good explanation amongst ourselves of what, what's going on. You know, we can have this put together to go out on Friday for next Tuesday.
Do you want me to make the one that goes out have that extra $29,000 for the repairs in it and then if state says no, we, you make a new one for Tuesday? Or do you want it the other way?
I would say, I would say we ought to do it so we don't have to make the change later necessarily.
Yeah.
The other thing would be, we have tempted to put it in and then we're make the change, put the PO in and, oh well, then be told.
Well, I would do, I would put, I would suggest we make the change now.
Say we have it there.
And then we, we submit it and then if the state says, no, we're not going to do it, then at that meeting, you put a new one.
We can scratch that out.
Yeah.
It's very better to take it off than to add it.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, it's easier to take it off, to hit it back on, so. All right, so that's what we'll do with that. And that'll hopefully, and if you're questioned, you know, on the 2018, basically, we're following the plan, starting off, you know, our initial appropriation, we're following the plan to get started. And if we have to make changes to that, we, you know, we will as best we can when we have enough information to, to make those changes. The other thing, we're kind of basing this, really, if you look at it, our projected revenue and earnings tax for, for 2018, I think was only up like $100,000 from what we projected for, for '17.
Right.
So it's not that we're, you know, really saying, wow, we, you know, we were up 15%. Yes, but over what we, you know, expected to get in.
The other thing that I would, I would like to mention about the 15% is this year, that includes the 1% we're paying back.
Right, it had to be, it had to be shown differently this year.
Right, we did not record that as general fund revenue last year and we are this year. So when you're saying, we're up 15% over this point last year, well, that's great, but you weren't showing that $450,000 or $500,000 that you paid back to those companies, where now we are.
So anyhow, with that, we're, we're not showing an extravagant amount of difference from this year to next year, so. The only other thing, it lives in your packet or not, but there's, Mr. Gears sent a note, which I believe we would have to approve at our Tuesday meeting in order to proceed or to send it to the powers that be about water department needing a...
Backhoe.
Backhoe and truck for the water department. And, so that would, I believe he's already talked to Anna Mary about this as well, but we have to initially approve it by council to, for him to, I think, proceed from there for next year.
And I don't think we need fis, and I'll have to ask Anna Mary, but we may not need Fiscal Emergency Commission permission to enter into that debt because it's out of a fund that's not an emergency.
And I believe you're right because I think we've mentioned that two or once before, so, yeah, so hopefully that, so when that comes up, you'll, we'll have an idea on that. The other thing, uh, we had a, a, a claim filed. Now, we can't really vote to do anything with this claim, but I think initially what I'm going to do is forward this to the law department, just so they can take a look at it in advance and to see what, so when we actually have a quorum, we can get more detail on that. But they'll at least have the, the, the information in front of them going from there. All right. Is there anything other questions for Mr. Stith or before we wind down here? All right, well, I'll close this wrap session because we're technically not in a full committee meeting.
Yeah.
And wish everybody a...
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas next week and we'll see you afterwards for sure, so, thanks, appreciate it.